Okay. I would like to call the March 18th meeting of the Caver Select Board to Order. The time is now six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. Would you all mind, please, standing for the Federal Agents?
The Federal Agents. To comply with the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend, would you care to lead us off on the community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. All right, first item on our agenda, citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up?
We need to call the planning boards.
That's what I was going to do when we saw the meeting, but that's why I want to call your meeting to order?
Yes, so I'll call the Planning Board's joint meeting with the Select Board to Order. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, citizens' participation, anyone like to come up and speak? Name and address, please?
Donna Marie Boran, 278 South Meadow Village. So, as you know, my passion as a town of Caver, and I always want the best for our town, our residents, our community, and for our infrastructure. But here's some of the reasons why I don't agree with MBTA 3A zoning. It encourages segregation in communities into separate areas where in time it'll begin to foster some kind of racism or income-level housing in our community. But MBTA 3A forced zoning has no considerations for Americans with disabilities. I work with older adults, and I've worked with older adults since I was 19 years old. My mother had two brain aneurysms, and I took care of her for a very long time. And we have very little sidewalks in Caver. There's no benches on the sidewalks. The mailboxes in some areas obstruct the sidewalks for wheelchairs. So MBTA 3A zoning is not for people with disabilities. By building 15-minute communities is the ultimate goal that I spoke to a town planner about, and he explained to me what a 15-minute community was. So a 15-minute community will lack the understanding and privilege and opportunities for their health services. So they want to build these 15-minute communities within our community, and as we know, our healthcare industry is very small in this town. We don't have the medical and healthcare industry in this town to support a 15-minute community, which is ultimately what MBTA 3A zoning is for. We will be limited to what we can get in the town, and that it overburdens the healthcare industry within our town. It puts the financial burden back to the homeowners who pay a high standard of taxes for properties presently. This program of forced zoning for MBTA 3A does not announce nor provide any adequate financial assistance for infrastructure assistance. In the town of Caver, we are an agricultural right-to-farm community. This will hurt our farmers. Forced zoning will affect our water aquifer and therefore ending the cranberry industry along with other farmin's that are going along in our town presently. This sets limitations on our community. The concept of converting neighborhoods into 15-minute cities can lead to the changing the character of the town of Caver, which may result in displacement of middle-income residents, may also not be feasible in areas with low population density or in low-income communities where transportation is very limited. Economic ruins. When you build these 15-minute communities, they want to build the grocery stores nearby, and they want it in areas where you don't have to travel beyond the 15 minutes. But that means if you, the people in South Caver, which is roughly maybe a little longer than 15 minutes, and then North Caver, those businesses will lack the business, financial business to keep their businesses up and running. If you talk about safety, the Plimpton Police Chief has sent out a letter to his community regarding these types of communities, and he said, "Building these types of communities along the highway promotes unsafe areas, and for instance, for violence, for drugs, for trafficking, because you can get in and off the highway very quickly." So in North Caver, they're saying that that's not a great area. And you can go back to read the Plimpton Police Chief's letter that he wrote to his town. I ask that you please look very hard at these types of zoning. Caver infrastructure is not made for apartment buildings. EMS and police and fire have already, in January of 2023, raised a high concern for public safety if a 40B was built at Edible Railroad in South Caver. No difference for MBTA zoning housing. A ladder truck is going to be needed. More police vehicles, more ambulances, and more staff. Caver schools do not have the room for 250 more children. It'll hurt the education system in our town promoting overcrowding and lack of adequate staffing. The septic system at the Caver Middle High School is not up to par to handle another large structure on it. A new treatment plant would be needed. We'll need to hire more staff. And let's just take the education from California. They recently had those high fire incidences out there with the lack of water. We don't have a public infrastructure for fighting fires. We rely upon our pump trucks, and we have the best volunteer fire department, I believe, in the state of Massachusetts currently. But that's to fight the fires that we currently have in our communities. And I support the fire department, and anything I'm saying is nothing negative towards them personally. It's just that I think adding a big infrastructure apartment building upon our town is going to hamper our fire department. And as we know, they brought it up to a higher standard so that we could pay less home insurance because of our fire department. We add this type of structure into our town, possibly, and I haven't done the research on it, but it possibly could raise the insurances for residents in town. And this is all about the residents in town also, not just about building more homes. That's basically about all I have to say. I gave most of you a copy of what I have tonight. And I also would like to make this statement. I did speak to my town attorney earlier, but I think this is a good question to raise. Why do you need to go into executive session to discuss this? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Mr. Belvin, please state your name and address.
Robert Belvin, 268 Street, as I always say. I want to ask you a question first. Am I going to be able to speak toward the budget of the North Caver Water District tonight?
As chairman, you can have a few words, yes.
A few words?
You can explain your thoughts, yes.
Okay. Because I don't want to take up time here that I'm going to take up again later on. Okay? So will I be able to make my statement about it, or you want me to do it now?
Do it now? Do it now.
All right. So when I took over as the chairman of the North Caver Water District, I had some high hopes that we could get the system back up and running until I got two new people that got appointed by you guys. I voted against it, but Eric has been helpful, Doug has not. Doug has been appointed twice, and he's not sought regular action. Okay? That ticks me off because he said he was going to, and he didn't. So in my opinion, he shouldn't run it ever again. For anything, you shouldn't appoint him to anything. Next is the plan. I was there yesterday for the fire alarm system, and we now have a leak. I'll just give you what we have now going on is, one heater is out of service, totally not working, no power to it at all. The other one is leaking, I think through the vent line because it was raining like crazy in it. The lights still don't work, some of them. Outlets still don't work. The computer now is totally shut down, doesn't work at all. The touchpads, when I took a look at those, those are version 2000. 2000, never upgraded. Kevin Tracy, the former chairman, asked this board for money for town meeting, never got it. Mike Palmieri came to this Board of Selectmen and asked for money and never got it for maintenance. All right? So year after year after year after year, chairman after chairman, no money to the North Caver Water District. In December '23, prior to me, Mike got a notification from Middleborough that they were increasing their rates. It happened in January '23. I had no clue that it had increased to one and a half times. So there, usually, used to be their rate was lower than Caver's rate, which was great. Even the one and a half was great. The problem is now it's above Caver's rate. So now we're paying to Middleborough $88 as a minimum charge, when we're only charging $45.90. So we have to increase the rates. Just got notified yesterday that they're going to increase the rates again in July. And who's going to pay those increases? The rate payers have to, meaning the water people. All right? My estimation right now is, was 125. We'd have to increase our minimum to 125, $45.90 to 125. Pretty big jump for our guys, people that are getting water there. Some of them forced to get water because of the contamination. All right? That's that one. The budget, my original budget for this North Caver Water District for next year was $996,000. That was to cover just getting the system up and running, find out what's wrong with it, fix what we need to fix. That was until I found out that the $200,000, $230,000 we spent on screens there, that are probably trashed because it's been sitting there for a year, even though the first thing I asked to do is to put our RFP out for an operator and get them running. So would have protected that, but I got stonewalled. All right? So then, we got a DEP letter, and we have a meeting tomorrow with DEP. All right? And Glenn, you, our lawyer, talked to you. You're going to be part of it. Did you get the link?
Yes.
Thank you. All right? I was against it, but I had changed a heart. All right? So then, with that DEP letter, my estimate is that somewhere around $1.3 million we're going to need for the Water District. Okay? So even with bottom-line figures here, we have projected $650,000 incoming in. After Eric did his cutbacks on my budget, what I had from the $996 came up to $781,000, all right, for our budget. We're only getting $200,000 from the town, okay? But the money for water users, that's money coming in, and it's going out. We can't include that in our budget because it's going to Middleborough. And right now, we're not getting enough money in to pay Middleborough, so it's going to come out of our budget, what we have now, for Middleborough rates. So for mine, we need to increase that $200,000 subsidy to $650,000, and that's what I'm asking you. I did ask at our meeting that that be increased, all right, and be told to you guys, and I don't think it has been done. So I'm telling you, you need to increase up to $650,000. Let the townspeople decide at town meeting, do you want to subsidize this for $650,000? All right, and the town come up with that money, or they don't. And if they don't, how much do they want to reduce it? Let town meeting decide that, not you guys. All right? And if you don't want to do that, Eric's is $131,000 that we need more subsidies above the $200. So that's my quick and down and dirty one. I'm just not happy. I'm not happy with the whole situation. I think it could have been, had you given me the people that wanted to, the three people that applied and had the meeting when they gave me it, we wouldn't be in this situation right now. But it's because of the Board of Selectmen, of who you decided to pick. All right? So it's on your heads, not mine.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing no one come up to the mic? Now going to start a joint meeting with the Planning Board. I want to thank the Planning Board members for coming to the meeting tonight.
Having us.
As well as two new visitors, Senator Kelly Duner and Representative John Gasky also joining us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to start off, I think, Senator Duner, do you have any updates for us, or Representative Gasky, on any new items or concerns in the legislature?
We could be here all night. If you want to be more specific to, was it the agenda items?
Yes.
Perfect. I actually do have copies for all the board members, just so you have it to kind of follow along with the MBTA Communities Act legislation that I did file. I'll let you guys get those for a second.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. So with this legislation, I filed it because one of the biggest challenges when I was
door-knocking for most residents resulted around the MBTA Communities Act. There were obviously a number, but this was definitely a big one. I supported it as a counselor in the city of Taunton, but the city of Taunton had the infrastructure for it. They were prepared for it with the water, sewer, roads, police, fire, everything. Fast forward, this first one, which is 1437, an act providing exemptions under the MBTA Communities law, I filed this trying to be, I was trying to be very realistic with the legislation, you know, not, "It's a traffic problem." You know, that's not something that's really going to stick. But actual, real challenges that the community is facing, one from being the water permit, which is a struggle for Middleborough. Some communities already have more than 15% low or moderate income housing. And infrastructure kind of being the number-one thing that I focused with this, which is water and sewer. And many senators up there that I've spoken with actually didn't know that some of our communities in Massachusetts still don't have town water and sewer. So that was pretty eye-opening for them, and they were open to have that conversation with me, just because, you know, they didn't know. A lot of these communities, like Boston, Cambridge, Brookline, you know, they obviously already have the infrastructure to be able to handle the influx of housing, whereas communities like Carver, Rehoboth, Middleborough, Berkeley, Berkeley is subject to it as well. The infrastructure is just not there with the on-call or volunteer firefighter departments, and a big one being the water and sewer. And my, you know, issue with that is if the Commonwealth isn't going to provide you guys the funding to get your infrastructure up to date, which I won't get ahead of myself, but I'm pretty sure they won't, then forcing this mandate on you guys is kind of where I had an issue with it. As well as adding in population, which 8,000 people doesn't really apply for Carver, but some of my community has said have under 8,000 people are also subject to this, as well as green space. So if we're going to be taking over green space and natural resources to rezone, I'm not okay with that. I may be a Republican, but I do want to protect our green space, our open space. It's very few and far between. I've always encouraged development, but it has to be in the right area. It has to be responsible development in the right area with the infrastructure in place. So that's the first bill I filed, which is 1437, that did receive bipartisan support so far. It hasn't been heard yet. The next one is 1438. This one I threw out there just as a compliance extension. Some of my communities, their grants were being pulled for not, quote, "complying." So this I just put out there, hoping to get a two-year extension just to allow communities, you know, more time to have these conversations with the Commonwealth. 1439, this one, my goal was to remove adjacent small communities. You know, I understand if the commuter rail is traveling through your community, that's one situation, but to then mandate the adjacent small communities, this is just not a one-size-fits-all solution, and unfortunately, that's the way it's being treated. And 1440, this is a big one, mainly because myself and Rep. Gasky, we experienced something two weeks ago, I want to say, but around grants. So one of my communities chose, you know, they went to town meeting, the town voted it down for obvious and understandable reasons, and the Commonwealth then came in, the governor came in, and took away a grant from the school system that was for mental health services. So that's why, this isn't why I filed that legislation, but I knew this was going to be coming, that they were going to start pulling grants from communities for not complying. So that's what this would do. It would take out that line item that gives them pretty much authority to do this with the mandate. Obviously, myself, Rep. Gasky, Rep. Lanatra, and Representative Oral fought really hard against it. We were able to get that grant reinstated, but it never should have happened in the first place, especially when it comes to children, schools, and mental health services. So that's a little summary, I guess, of the legislation I've put forth. They do have bills, and they're in committee. That doesn't necessarily mean they are going to get heard, as I'm sure you guys are very familiar with. They can block bills whenever they want to. But this one is receiving some support, so I'm trying to stay positive with it, just because a lot of people, elected officials, just didn't realize, you know, what some of our communities are like. Many of them have never been to Bristol or Plymouth County to really understand the challenges that we face here. And so just in talking with them, as great as Boston, Cambridge, and New, and Brookline as they are, we're different here, and we should be treated differently. And I just really think that the legislators up there need to come down to our community and really understand why, you know, we just can't handle the MBTA Communities Act coming in with the zoning and the rezoning. And many of them have been very receptive to that. So I'm going to remain positive, continue having that conversation with them. Happy to answer any questions that I know the answer to that you guys might have, but that's just a little summary of what's out there currently. There is other legislation out there that I didn't propose, but I did try to take a more practical way about it, just with realistic situations, because coming in saying, "We don't want it because it's going to cause traffic," really doesn't, you know, hold its footing. So I wanted to give them, you know, real infrastructure challenges that my communities are facing in hopes that, you know, they'll be understanding and receptive to at least keeping an open mind when it comes to the zoning challenges.
Thank you so much. Representative Gasky, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure. So from the, with regards to the House side, like Senator Duner has several bills going with regard to the MBTA Act. There are a multitude of bills in the House that are focused almost exactly the same way, anywhere from repealing to making minor adjustments in order to make it more digestible for smaller communities. But the incident with our neighbor to the west of us there, it started to open up some eyes, and I started asking a lot more questions and reaching out to different enforcement agencies as far as what are we, what are we as a community, as Carver, looking for and what to expect coming from? And I spoke with, most recently, I'll start with speaking with the Attorney General's Office. They were not able to talk about it too much because of the lawsuits. We've got five different communities that are, that have filed suit since the announcement of the, since the letter came out as far as the unfunded mandate. So like I said, they weren't too forthcoming with any information, but they did appoint me over to the Housing and Liberal Communities, and that department is the one who determines compliance. And right now, the AG's office is purely for enforcement. So I was able to speak with Chris Klutchman and Seth Nadeau with Housing and Liberal Communities, and it was really, it was a good conversation, very eye-opening. And one of the things that they talked about was with regards to grants and funding for the towns that are, that choose to be non-compliant, to start there. The things that are not supposed to be touched are formula grants and stuff like Chapter 90 and Chapter 70 funding. For those who aren't aware, Chapter 90 and Chapter 70 funding have to do with roads and schools. So our roads and schools are not supposed to be touched. The formula grants are a lot of federal grants. They are block-type grants for education, public safety, healthcare. There are Medicaid grants, Title I education grants, child nutrition, excuse me, child nutrition grants, highways, and assistance for needy families. Where the issues start to fall is in the discretionary grants. And the discretionary grants have to do with community development, homeland security for purposes of enhancing response to emergencies, environmental protection, transportation, health and human services. So basically, it boils down to is you've got formula grants, which, what determines a formula grant is if you need to look, if you're looking at the income level of a community or the ethnic makeup of the communities, things like that, that's where they start to use those different formulas and become, determine whether they're formula grants or discretion grants. And with the discretion grants, it's not, it's not a flat no, you're not going to get it. But the granting authority, whichever department is issuing the grant, can take the compliance into account, and they'll be looking at that and determining, you know, you've got two communities asking for the same thing, this one's in compliance and this one is not, they might lean towards the one that's in compliance. So when it comes to, and that's kind of what I was kind of coming here tonight to do, is to make sure that everyone's aware of what we could lose, and what we could lose and what we could gain with respects to making the decision, and to inform the public so that they can make the right decision for themselves and for their community. So, but that's where I am with that. Like I said, the, as far as the Attorney General's Office, they're merely enforcement arm, and that's what they're, that's how they're going about it. They've been told to go after it, and that's what they're doing.
Great. Thank you so much for your input. Sure. I guess I'd open up to the Planning Board first, see if they have any questions or any...
At this time, it isn't, it isn't that I have any questions, but I just want to say as the chairman of the Planning Board that I don't like the fact that we have to be compliant. And I feel like that's being put on our backs and... And I feel like that's, you know, being put on our backs and... Sure. I do not think it's right that we are being made to be compliant and that we are threatened to lose these grants or grants that we could otherwise get. So, I just wanted to say that simply I am against it and for the purpose of not being able to have the infrastructure in order to support it.
Just a question, someone have their phone on, I'm hearing music, is it?
Me. So with that, I pass it on to my remaining board members.
I want to thank you, Senator Dooner and Representative Gasky.
Can we get a microphone over there?
Use the one on the front desk, that desk right there.
Can this one reach?
I want to thank you, Senator and Representative, for the efforts you've made on this. My concern is that this could financially bankrupt a town like us. We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the town services, we work with an on-call volunteer fire department, our police department is constantly understaffed historically, and our school systems eat up a large chunk of our budget, around 70%. Developments like this can seriously impact the long-term fiscal prospects of a town like this. We are working on many of the things that have gone through our master plan, which has been approved through the state, and we are an agricultural town and one of the few ones left close to Boston, not to mention that a vast majority of our town is wetlands. And we work to support our agricultural industries, and it seems year after year, various mandates come along and they threaten the financial stability because they come out of nowhere. This is something that would take 10 years for a town like us to possibly be prepared for. If this development went in in two years, I couldn't even tell you where Carver would be at that point. But thank you very much for your efforts.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. First of all, thank you both for advocating for your towns, because I think this should have been done, some of these issues should have been brought up a long time ago. And, you know, I do, you know, Senator Dooner, to what you said about your legislative colleagues not even knowing that there were towns down here that didn't have public water, to think that they would pass this kind of bill and this kind of burden on the towns and not know that, that's, I won't say what I think it is, but it's pretty, it's pretty sad. But my question to you is, and I don't know if you know the answer or not, but do you know how many towns are affected by this bill that don't have public water? Any idea?
I don't know the number. I know, you know, many in my district, many in Senator Fatman's district as well, like the smaller communities out in Worcester, like Sutton. So I don't have the exact number, but I'll definitely get it over to you.
Well, the reason I ask, do you think it would be helpful to advocating for this type of bill if those town administrators were all to get together and advocate as a group to get this passed? Do you think that would be helpful at all?
I think any sort of advocacy definitely helps, helps pass things. And part of it is just educating, I think, and just, yeah, educating the legislators on, you know, what our community is like. And I've stood up there and I've told them, you know, if you guys don't believe that that's happening, come to my district and I'll show you that we don't have town water and sewer. And yeah, I think any sort of advocacy can definitely, definitely help.
Well, maybe something to consider, if you could put together a list of the towns that don't have public water, maybe you could reach out and those town administrators could band together and hopefully help this a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. We could loop Glenn in with them and go from there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ryan?
I think similar, I was going to ask, what actions could Carver and other communities take to support this? I think it's great, and it's a, you know, the bills that you filed address a lot of the key issues for us and other towns, but to get you more support and everyone else to be aware of the situation, what do you recommend that we can do for actions?
Yeah, definitely just reaching out to elected officials. I will say, at the moment, nobody will probably take a call on this due to the litigation that's happening, but hopefully that litigation is going to give us some form of answer as far as, I think the biggest concern is the grants, you know, whether a community complies or not, but potentially losing a grant that, you know, many of the smaller communities absolutely depend on is the bigger concern. So I'm hoping we'll have those answers with the litigation hopefully wrapping up at some point, but definitely calling elected officials. I have, you know, when people call or email me about legislation that's really important to them, you know, I immediately put it to the top of the list. We have 7,000-plus bills that come across our desk, so definitely just reaching out to legislators helps. But with the active litigation, that definitely makes it a little tricky right now.
Just a, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for being here tonight. I just wanted to address, not really ask a question, but just address some of the things that have been said here. I was the town's former conservation, I was a conservation agent for the town for many, many years, so I understand the importance of the open space preservation, of our aquifer protection, grant money. We bought a lot of our open space due to grants that we wrote, I wrote. Having said that, I'm also a big supporter of affordable housing. And my position on these, this MBTA article, whether it's on our warrant or not, is that essentially, at the very least, when it comes to us, we will be able to review it. The Planning Board will be able to have a site plan review for these projects. That's very different from 40B projects that are stuck down our throat. In my opinion, I think the thing to tackle is get rid of those, that 40B legislation, and get this fixed so that we don't lose our grant money. I think there's a concern, and I know this is going to be unpopular, but there is a concern about affordable housing. Nobody wants it in their backyard, but everybody needs it. So that's, that's a major concern. This is, the concerns about our having it built by the highway, I don't know if people know this or not, but that's already zoned commercial, and there are things already built there. So it would be quite a process to come to Carver. They'd have to get the landowner, the current landowners, the big shopping centers and so on, to actually sell their property in order to build something like this. The concerns about drug use by the highway, we already have things by the highway, and I have no idea whether that, having a highway increases drug use or not, but whether or not this happens, we still have a highway. And that I don't think is an issue. And in terms of hurting the farmers, I don't see that either, because all of our underlying zoning is residential agricultural. There are no farms right in the area where this, where the plan was to zone these units. Having said all that, you know, once again, the state is trying to force something down our throats with no flexibility. So I too appreciate what you filed. That makes a big difference. I think the root problem is this idea that everybody has to do it a certain way. And, but again, if this were to happen, it's better than a 40B, because the town has some kind of control. There's very little control, as I'm sure you know, over 40B construction. There's no conservation oversight, there's no planning board oversight. If this came through, you would have that oversight. That's kind of the one positive thing to say about it. So that's my, that's my spiel. I do appreciate the, what you have filed there in the legislature, it's much appreciated and very appropriate.
Thank you. Yeah, my goal with this is just really to try to have that conversation again, now that more information is out there and now that people are starting to understand, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all, again. I'm sorry, I'm taking over here. You know, Cambridge is great, Boston is great, but our community here should be treated differently. It's not a one-size-fits-all, and there needs to be more communication with the municipalities with the approach for anything with the Commonwealth.
Absolutely. I agree.
Yeah, if I, yeah, just to address a couple of things with regards to the type of building, this building is the housing that would be built, you know, looking at a minimum of 15 units per acre, and it's a, it would be a by right type of construction and approval process. So it's, and the interesting thing about it as well is it doesn't have to be affordable housing. It can be whatever the developer, whatever works best for the developer.
There is, I'm sorry to interrupt if I may, Mr. Chair, there is a certain percentage that needs to be affordable in it.
Not in, not in...
No, no, that's up to the town.
Not, not, it's not written into the code, it's written into local bylaws.
That's up for the town to decide.
But yes, it is a, like I said, as far as, there's not as much control over the projects as we would like, especially coming from the Planning Board, having something like this come in, would like to have, would like to have a little bit more say over how something like this would go. But the way it's written right now is there's not a lot of control on the local level, because a lot of it is, is all by right. So it's...
Well, there is site plan review, sorry.
There's review, but again, it's their project and it's, it's much closer to the 40B than, than any of us would like.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky. Sorry, Mary Ellen?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to say thank you very much for attending the meeting, Senator Dooner and Representative Gasky. I've talked about this before, I am absolutely against this, and I don't know any other way to say it. I agree with Mr. Shea about his comment about bankrupting this town. I don't know about anyone else in this room here tonight that pays taxes, but I'm really fed up with my taxes going higher and higher and higher, and I think that that's going to be the ultimate result if this is approved, is what we will all see, because it's going to provide, it's going to put such a financial burden on fire, EMS, police, and the school system that the only way to recap that money is to raise our taxes. And I don't want to see that. There have been comments that have been made by our planner that he doesn't believe the developers will come, we're just creating an overlay district. I respectfully disagree on that statement, about that statement, because I've been in real estate law for almost 40 years, and I can't tell you how many developers come forward and will pick a project and will flip that thing around and make a ton of money on it, when none of us would think that it was worth anything at all. So for anyone to be that optimistic, to think that anyone would say, "We don't want to go to Carver because that will cost too much money," I don't think that's a fair statement at all. And, you know, to say about the 40B, Sarah, I would agree with you on that, but I still don't think it would stop any 40B from coming to town as well.
Oh, no, it wouldn't. You're absolutely right. It would increase our percentage of affordable.
Right, right. And I just, I hope that if this does go on the warrant, that the townspeople come out and we vote this thing down, because, you know, even if we are looking at this from a litigation standpoint, I am fairly confident that the cost of litigation would be far less than what we would end up seeing in the long run with the cost that we would incur as a community.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I think two points. One is it wouldn't increase, we couldn't increase taxes beyond 2.5%. We'd have to have a debt, an override to do that. What I think on the other side is it would impact services, because you'd have to balance, you know, you may have to cut positions and things like that to shift the money unless you went for an override, and I don't think that an override would probably go through for something like this. So I think the impact would be more on the services that exist already and the inability to have services to support everything that we need, like police and fire and things like that. So I think on the table, it's the action of the town with respect to an article at town meeting. Do we let everything settle? It sounds like there's so many things in flux right now, you know, with the bills and the lawsuits from towns and things like that. So what action should the town be taking? I think that's part of what's on the agenda tonight. Do we want to put an article before town meeting, or are we better off not doing that and letting things settle out over the next six months, eight months, and then maybe if we had to consider that after? I think that's what we're trying to decide tonight.
That's a good idea.
And I guess I'd raise a question to Attorney Corbald, to put you on the spot. Am I, if I'm wrong, please feel free to let me know. Right now, as Mr. Ryan said, taking this to town meeting, the taxpayers and hearing what they say is not really, it's not a wrong answer at all, it's, they'll probably hear the feedback, their concerns, whether they want this thing to move forward. If we don't do it, then we're in compliance till the end of December?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if it was something that we waited out, the legislature to find out what would change, whatever these happening with the current suits, it's a waiting game to find out what's going on, would either need to have a possible fall town meeting, or we would be out of compliance January 1, 2026 until April, that town meeting? Are those the dials I'm turning right now or not?
That's correct, right? So, right now you are in a state of interim compliance, because you have submitted the required plan that, you know, basically fills in a bunch of blanks about your town, and then that sort of spits out what your requirements are for creating this district. So having submitted that plan, that then gives you essentially a stay of execution until the end of the year. And as long as you enact the required bylaw by the end of the year, you would remain in compliance. But as you've heard from your esteemed legislative delegation, there is quite a bit that is in flux at this point, both on the legislative side and on the legal side. And, you know, I could see the desire to put this before the public at town meeting and see what members of the public think, see if they, you know, support the views that have been expressed here, but at the same time, you know, you might be better off sort of waiting and seeing how some of these actions develop so that, you know, you can plan accordingly, and if you do have to bring something to town meeting, you know, it's in a different posture and it's less speculative than it is right now.
Mr. Ryan? Thank you.
Yep. So to summarize, if we were to go to town meeting and vote this down, which is a good possibility, then we would not be in compliance. We are in compliance now, so if we, if we hold off and wait and see how things settle out, then we could always unfortunately have a special town meeting in the late fall if we needed to, to then take the vote and see what the voters decide as far as, you know, supporting it or not supporting it.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. I can understand and appreciate the logic of waiting till the fall to see what happens. I have no, I have no issues with that. I would just point out that it seems to me, from what we're hearing from other towns, that most grants that are coming their way these days are being conditioned upon the town accepting the MBTA Communities Act. So while we could wait till the fall and see what happens on the legislative side, and I see the, I see the sense in that, just keep in mind that I don't think that helps us really grant-wise, because I think most grants that are being sent down these days from the state are being conditioned upon the town accepting the MBTA Communities Act before that grant takes effect. So, just my thoughts.
I guess, I'm not sure if anyone can speak to this, if we're in compliance, though, are we subject to possibly losing grants on January 1, 2026? Does anyone know that, or is it something that they could just decide, you haven't passed anything yet and you're still in compliance, and then, and then we lose a grant? I don't, that doesn't make sense.
Just one thought along that. It seems to me, one of the problems with this, with this law, and our legislators may be able to speak to this, but it seems like the state keeps moving the goalposts. You know, what is in effect today is not what was in effect three months ago, and it's probably not going to be what's in effect three months from now. They seem to keep... They seem to keep moving the goalposts to push towns to accept this, because towns aren't accepting it. And, so, I don't, I don't know if anyone can answer that question, we don't know what the rules are.
Actually, Mr. Townsend, I can, I can actually speak to a little bit of that from my conversation with HLC. And what they brought, what they pointed out was, because I had mentioned about the 13 grants that were being discussed last year, and at the, at the start of this year, when this was approved initially, there was only three grants that were on the table. The legislature has been the one that has moved the goalposts. They have, so, when it was originally, when this was originally signed back in 2020, again, it was, it was three grants, and over the, over the course of the next few years, they keep, they've kept adding different grants that were on the table. And in actuality, it's only five grants that legislature has said are on the table, and the others have been added by the governor's office. So, as far as legislatively goes, there's, there's only five, and the rest are coming from the governor. So, as far as the goalposts being moved, yes, they are. And with regards to, and a lot of it has to do with these, with the discretion that these agencies are being given over the grants that they, that they issue. So, to that respect, could other things be affected? It would not surprise me if they come down with a harder, with a harder angle on that. That being said, Mr. Corbo, question for you with regards to the lawsuits that are currently ongoing. Am I correct in stating that if we do not vote, we do not have standing to be able to join any of these lawsuits if we so choose? But if we vote in the negative, then we would have standing to be able to join the lawsuits with regards to the unfunded mandate? Am I correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know that I would.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm prepared to really talk.
Okay.
About the town's legal strategy.
Yeah.
At this point in a, in a public forum. But, you know, the, the unfunded mandate issue is going to affect everybody who is deemed an MBTA community.
Right.
Whether they're in compliance or not. You know, the issue is, is this a, an act or a regulation that, you know, imposes on municipalities more than mere administrative costs? And so, while, you know, you may be considered in compliance today, you still have this unfunded mandate that is, is hanging over you, and, and if you do not vote in favor of, of the bylaw at some point, whenever that point is, then, you know, you are subject to, in my experience, very swift enforcement action, like within days, having grants not only denied, but having grants with executed contracts taken away days later. And, you know, to Representative Gasky's point, yes, the legislature put in five grants that could be at risk. The regulations have 13 grants that can be at risk, and what I've seen is essentially every discretionary grant is at risk. And the example that Madam Senator gave of a, of a school grant for children with disabilities is not on the list of the 13 in the regulations, and that was taken away within days of this community being deemed noncompliant.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Towns?
One other thought, and I guess I'd have to ask you or the town administrator for your thoughts as far as what you know is coming down the line. But as far as waiting till the fall and a possible fall town meeting to vote on this, we normally don't have fall town meetings in Carver. I don't know if we have anything else that you may be aware of that may necessitate a fall town meeting, but if it's just this item, it does cost quite a bit of money to hold a town meeting. And, you know, for an additional five months of being in compliance with the most likely, any grant that comes down in that time is going to be conditioned upon us accepting the MBTA Communities Act anyway. Is there a benefit to waiting till the fall? I mean, what's, what's the cost-benefit analysis here? Do we have anything that we anticipate maybe having to deal with in the fall?
From the town side, I'm sorry, through the chairs, Mr. Towns, we don't have anything anticipated for the fall. The only thing that did come up this past, for the annual, was the Jellystone rezoning where they have, you know, they missed the deadline, and they talked about a petition article. I don't know if they'll come back in the fall with a petition article that would force us to have a, a town meeting. But you're correct, it does cost money to hold a town meeting, particularly one, you know, that we've heard from other communities, when you have this topic on the agenda, you know, there are overflow crowds, which require more staff and, you know, and more resources from the town.
I just, I just wonder if we're not better off putting it on the warrant, letting the town vote on it, and finding out where the, where the town stands.
Mr. Ryan?
What I'm hearing, if it makes sense, is Attorney Corbo just said if we do have an April town meeting and we vote it down, then the grants are all in jeopardy right now. They could all be taken away immediately. We'd be in a really bad position if that were to happen. If we don't bring it to town meeting and hold off till the fall, then we're still in compliance, so I don't think the grants would be jeopardized. It would cost a little bit more to wait, but I think as the dust settles or things settle out, it is possible the conditions may change enough, you know, over the summer that, you know, we wouldn't be impacted and may not even have to have the town meeting. So, that's, that's what I'm weighing out. I think there's a huge risk of going to town meeting, turning this down, and then having all of our grants be, you know, in jeopardy. If, as long as we can guarantee that by waiting till the fall, we're not going to lose any grants, that seems to be the key part here, is that if we do wait and we don't lose any of the grants, it seems to me it's better to hold off until, until the fall.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. So, through you, Mr. Chair, I agree with Mr. Ryan. I think that it's possible that the legislation that our esteemed colleagues have introduced might pass, hopefully. It does buy us a little time, and we are currently in compliance.
Attorney Corbo? Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to correct the record, not dissuade the discussion, but just to be clear on, you know, what my position is, and that is, right now, you are in interim compliance because you filed the plan. My position is that if you go to town meeting in April and town meeting votes no, you are still in interim compliance until December, because.
Okay.
Town meeting can have any number of opportunities to vote again, to adopt a bylaw between April and December. So, you know, again, I, I understand all of the points that are being made, and I'm not trying to sway anyone in one, but I don't want my words to possibly be used against you at some point in the future. So, I just did want to make that, that clear, that I am not conceding the point that you would be immediately out of compliance.
Okay.
Can I just, one question, not to, do you know of any towns that might be compliant? And has a similar situation? And they're supposed to get their grants, but they're delayed or they're, or they're contingent upon acceptance at a future date?
Yes, it is my understanding that many grants are being sort of held in abeyance, pending a determination of compliance.
So, that takes the grant situation, doesn't matter. If it, if we vote and they say, and town meeting votes no, we don't get our grants. If we don't vote and we have grants submitted, there's a, there's a possibility they could be held until December 31st, to see if we're going to be in compliance. So, I think we're probably.
I just have one question. Can anybody tell me how much money we received specific to these grants last year?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I asked the town administrator and the assistant town administrator to look into all the grants that were listed on the email and, and how many we've received, and, and when we've gotten them, and the reply I got, that we had only gotten one of, one grant, and it was several years ago. So, there, there aren't many.
And we're looking at millions of dollars and exponential costs in, in approving this. Have we looked into signing on to any of the unfunded mandate requirement lawsuits that have, are currently taking place?
I wouldn't feel comfortable commenting at this particular point in time.
I'm sorry?
I wouldn't feel comfortable commenting on lawsuits at this particular point in time.
No, signing on is an interesting party. That's not signing on to sue the state or anything. It means that we have an interest in what's happening, and it's already been determined that this is an unfunded mandate. Is that correct?
Depends on who you're talking to.
Yes.
I believe that the, the state has determined that it is an unfunded mandate.
Attorney Corbo?
If I could interject, and, Mr. Corbo, please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the state auditor said it was an unfunded mandate.
It has been so determined.
And the attorney general said it wasn't, so who knows?
All right. So, I think we've gone over every single issue, issue imaginable here, and I guess this particular point in time, I guess the planning board would be the ones that would start any kind of process with regards to recommending an article for town meeting. Do you have any thoughts with that? I know you've already voted once not to present an article. If there's any information you hear tonight, change your mind.
No, I don't think, I can't speak for the whole board, but I do not think that we are still in the same situation that, at the beginning of this meeting, is that we can't afford to lose our grants and where it's up against us. So, given the opportunity to have the town vote on it, seems to be the way to go.
So, you, so have the town vote on it, so you would be bringing an article then to town meeting?
If we're going to lose our grants.
What grants? We just said the last grant we got was several years ago.
Sorry, no comments.
Mr. Chair, if I could inter, if I could interject, Mr. Robinson, which town meeting should we bring it to? The one in next month, or the one, a one in the fall?
I would think the one in the fall.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
If you're polling the board members, I am completely against it. I think the fiscal impacts in this town would be absolutely devastating. But I am firmly of the mindset that the town folks, the will of the people should be followed, and they should have an opportunity to vote on it. And I think the board has made itself very clear on where it stands in regards to this issue, and that was just six, six, eight weeks ago. So, I think you might have a chance of swaying a few people come the autumn, but I, we just held a meeting on it recently, and I don't see that anybody's minds have changed in regards to that, but I wouldn't speak for anybody other than myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I'll just throw one out there, is instead of an article, I'm trying to get an idea of what town meeting might say. So, I think we've done this once before, when we did the elementary school, a non-binding referendum. That's really not an article, but asks taxpayers, "Do you, do you even want us to look at this particular zoning article?" Any thoughts?
If, if I might, my, my question would be, where would it appear on the warrant article? My question would be, where would it appear on the, the warrant? Is it going to be buried to the end, to the last 100 people are left, or is this going to be put right up front?
I have no idea. But is that something that's even feasible, Attorney Corbo?
And would it be better to put it on town election warrant? I mean, the town election.
Mr. Townsend?
I, memory serves me correctly, and it was a while ago, but I thought the non-binding referendum we did for the school was a, a vote, and not a town meeting vote. It was a, it was a ballot vote. I don't, personally, I don't see the point in a non-binding referendum, just to come back in the fall and have to do something again. I think we should have, I think we should have put it on the warrant and not put it on the warrant. I think the town needs to vote on this, and, you know, I think everyone knows where I stand. I hope the town comes out and overwhelmingly votes to reject it. I think it's a terrible law. But I, I think the town needs to vote on it, and that's just my opinion.
I agree with that, Mr. Townsend.
So, the planning board's position is wait and see, and see what happens in the fall? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think we would have to ask all of us. We would have to vote on that, whether or not, but did we not already, did we not already do that, Mr. Planner?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Carver, Mass. What the planning board has voted on is not submitting an article to town meeting prior to the warrant being closed. That's all the town, the planning board has voted on.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, any questions?
I guess, just for clarification for the people at home in the audience, is that, so it's the planning board would have to put the article together to put that on the warrant, and, you know, the, the select board just puts it on once the planning board creates it, but they've, they've chose not to put an article at this time. So, it's kind of a moot point. Do we, we really have no action that we can take until, until they, if they decide to potentially put one on for the fall, that would probably be the next, the next time we would address this.
Okay. Last comments, Mr. Towns?
Mr. Chairman, just, I, I think, and perhaps Mr. Bottom or Mr. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the planning board needs to put together an article. There, there is an article, correct? They just, the planning board just voted not to put the article on the warrant, but there is an article, correct?
If I may, no.
No?
There's not.
Okay.
The discussion that the planning board was having in December was about potential locations for the MBTA zoning bylaw. This is an iterative process, where the Commonwealth wants to know, where do you intend to put this zoning at? If you said, "Well, we're going to put the zoning in the Great Swamp," the Commonwealth might say, "You know, it seems like you guys are trying to game us here by putting this zoning article on a place you can't build anything."
I guess my, my point was that maybe this whole discuss, discussion is moot, because if the, even if the planning board wanted to vote tonight to put an article on the warrant, they don't have an article. There's no article right now to put on the warrant, correct?
So, if there was a motion tonight to add this to the warrant, in order to have a hearing prior, have a hearing that we'd advertise in the morning, that hearing would, earliest possible hearing would be at town meeting on April 8th. You could propose a draft zoning bylaw from the, from the, basically the model bylaw that the MBTA uses. Glenn had, the town administrator had asked me to take a look at something like that. So, I looked at both the model bylaw and another small agricultural community, Tops Field, population 6,500, that adopted a bylaw last year, approved by the attorney general. So, you would, it would be advertised in the morning. When the ad comes out on Friday, it says, "You can look at this stuff in the town clerk's office." So, we would be filing something that really doesn't have that sort of agreement as where we're going with this.
Could I just ask one more question? So, but I guess my, my point is, normally what happens is the articles come from different places, and then the select board puts them on the, on the warrant. So, I guess, if, if the planning board was to vote yes, to put an article on the warrant, we don't have a physical article right now that the select board could look at and say, "Yeah, we, but we vote to put this on the warrant." We don't, we don't have one.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
My answer would be that the, the planning board would need sufficient time to consult with other boards, committees, and citizens of the town to develop an area in which that it would feel would be appropriate, and that's part of the requirements of this lobbying passes, for us to identify the place to put it.
All right. Well, I think, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight, especially the planning board as well, if, I think that's all we've got on the agenda. If you'd like to adjourn.
Yes, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Again, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you again, Senator and Representative, for your time tonight.
Thank you again, Senator and Representative, for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you, John Gaskin. Representative.
All right. Next item on the agenda, a discussion by Senator Dooner and Representative Gaskin on the dissolution of the North Carver Water District.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did have a conversation with Senator Dooner this afternoon about this topic. And what I really asked her to, to look at, and Representative Gaskin, I didn't have a chance to talk to him, but he's more than welcome to chime in here, is to talk about the process. And I know it is a hypothetical, you know, if the dissolving the North Carver Water District did pass at town meeting, you know, what are the next steps? What happens, what happens from our end and how, I mean, primarily to how long we think that process will take. I will tell you, I did have a conversation today with the attorney from the North Carver Water District about, you know, if it does pass, if we have an interim plan to how we can help out the North Carver Water District immediately knowing that there's going to be a time constraint here. But again, if we could hear from either Representative Gaskin or Senator Dooner.
So I can speak to the general process for, for any home rule petition that comes before us. First, it goes to an informal session. From there, it gets sent to the Rules Committee. Rules will then pick whichever committee in the Senate or House that they deem it's appropriate for. It then gets a docket number for the hearing, and that gets lumped into all the other home rule petitions. They all kind of come at the same time. For example, if it was in the Senate, the Senate would make changes, or if they had changes, those changes would then have to come back to the town pending upon how, there's many different ways to do a petition, but pending how you guys do the petition, it would then have to go back to town meeting for approval for any changes. There's various different ways that I can send over to you I don't have with me. And then the Committee on Third Reading would push to move it to the floor. And then, once it's on the floor, it would get voted, for example, by the Senate, and then it goes to the House, similar, a similar process. And that is, I would argue, a minimum of nine to 12 months, just even if it gets moved along for any home rule petition. They all kind of get lumped in together. So definitely looking at, I would even say, a year, just on the safe side for any home rule petition you guys have.
Great. She wants?
I just want to respectfully say that I think in the past, the representatives that we had from the House and the Senate both kind of made it very clear to us that if the town votes for something, the legislature doesn't deny it. It may take a while, but they typically do not deny.
Right. I didn't say that they did. I'm just talking about the process and not specific to any home rule petition. We just file it. It goes through, through the same motions, but I'm not going to sit here and say somebody wouldn't. Typically, it wouldn't, but I can't predict how other legislators are going to vote.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item is discussion with Senator Dooner, Representative Gaskin on the ever-sourced double poll situation.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I want to apologize to the, to the select board here. I thought there was actually legislation passed, or actually filed, to address this double poll situation. And I told Senator Dooner, I think the board would be interested if there are any fines or ways that they could enforce the double poll rules. So I'm not really sure that does exist. Senator Dooner did some research. I believe there was a 2003 bill filed, and so I don't know if she could speak to that a little bit, but she, she did have some thoughts of, of her own as a, as a, as a city councilor in Taunton.
Yeah. There was some form of bill back in 2003, but from a city councilor, that followed on us as councilor, or not councilors, the zoning board to make a zoning bylaw around the double polls. But I am not an attorney. I do not know Carver's bylaws specifically, but that is what we did in the city of Taunton is we created a bylaw for it, and I believe they were pretty respectful of it. We've, I know I've turned down polls coming in, so.
Yeah, we've just got a situation here that's been around for quite some time, which I find a way to resolve it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it's quite on to me to, to do a little research to find a few of these bylaws that we found from surrounding towns and bring those to the board. So I think we can further that discussion, you know, at some of our meetings.
All right. Well, I guess I'd like to say thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck on your new position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take a quick break and?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to adjourn.
Just to, take a minute of recess. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to call the March 18th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order, back to order, the time is 7:25. All right, do we have the town's finance director available? Can you hear us?
Oh, our volume's down. Or her volume. I know it's up.
Maybe she's muted?
Mute. She could be muted. She ran away.
I know she could hear us.
Yeah, she could, but her, her volume is not up. All right. There she is. Oh.
Can you tell if she's muted? No, just not muted.
Karen, we can't hear you.
We can actually hear her, it's just very light, correct?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't hear her.
I heard some voice.
Will you?
Can Karen's TV go on?
Or do you have the remote? Yeah, maybe that's it.
No.
You might need the remote.
Yeah.
Here we go. That's probably it.
Nope. Maybe not.
Technology.
Yeah, it's not working.
It's great when it works.
The other option is to have her call.
Yeah.
Cell phone. Could you call your cell phone?
Yeah, good.
All right.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, now.
Oh, great.
It was that joy.
Can you hear me? Mr. Ch, you're in the rest of the select board members.
Shelby, whatever you did, great job.
Yeah, well, she said join.
Mr. Townsend, you must be a lucky one.
Karen, can you say something?
Ms. Preva, could you say something?
Oh, it's echoing.
She's saying anything?
No. You could go back to a phone call and just mute that, you know, if you want to have her call you.
Call the cell phone.
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon, you want to have her call your cell phone or call her, and then we'll just mute it here.
Can you hear me?
We are.
Yes, can you hear us?
I can hear everybody. I can see everybody.
All right. What's going to happen?
There is an echo.
Almost perfect.
Okay. All right. So what I'd like to do is move some of this order around because just in case we, I don't want to vote on an article and then have a change and go back to an article. So why don't we start with the North Carver Water District?
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to lead off here. If you go to Article Four, the Enterprise Fund, North Carver Water District, you'll see a couple of changes here. There's one minor change to the article language, particularly, you know, the addition of four other sums, which is outlined in blue, and then it does spell out the North Carver Water District instead of the Water Enterprise Fund. I do want to note a mistake that we did change, and again, it didn't get, this is...
Turn the mic off, maybe.
Yeah.
The volume on the TV, I think that's...
Yeah, just the volume.
I think that one's fine. Hello? No, the other one.
The other one?
The TV one.
The remote control?
Turn that one down.
Karen, can you talk to us?
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me now about the?
Yes. That sounds better.
Mr. Carter, try it.
Test thing, want to get, no echo?
No echo.
Test, take it line.
And then, Mr. Chairman, and this can be read, but under the, the Water Enterprise Revenue, where you see the General Fund subsidy, it says raise and appropriate. That should have been free cash. It was actually caught before. I don't remember which select board member caught that, but it, it didn't, the edit didn't take, that's all. With that said, I'd like to have a larger general discussion about the North Carver Water District and then, and then the budget, and I'll, I'll turn this over to Karen when she talks about the revenue that we do bring in. Right now, the chair just alluded to this, there is a $200,000 subsidy from the town to be able to run the North Carver Water District. That is, this budget right here is recommended by myself and the finance director. The North Carver Water District Commissioners, they voted a $781,000 budget, which would require, I believe, a $131,000 addition to the free cash, which is why the chairman held off on the free cash article to see if he wanted to adjust that. That was a two to one vote from the commission members. Mr. Belvin voted against the, that budget. But again, this is the budget we're recommending from myself and the finance director. The commissioners have voted this $781,000 budget. So, you know, that'd be something if the board wants to increase the free cash for the North Carver Water District, you know, we'd have to, again, go back to Article Two and make an adjustment there. I, I do feel that this budget is the budget they've had for years, this, this approximate range of $650,000. What I think the North Carver Water Commissioners are looking for is additional money in the budget to be able to correct deficiencies that they see there. I don't take that approach. I think if the town were to run the North Carver Water District, we would commence the engineering study to find out the exact cost to bring the, the North Carver Water District facility up and running. You know, that, that study has not been done, and that's something that needs to be done before I can bring a budget to you. And again, quite honestly, it would be a capital plan. You know, I really wouldn't be, I wouldn't be looking for budget items. I'd be looking for a capital to get it up and running. You know, the cap, I mean, the, the budget really is for the, the day-to-day operation. You know, you, you might have a small capital amount, and they just case up the brakes, a pump brakes or a line brakes or something like that for an emergency situation, but, you know, to get this plant back up and running, it really should be a capital item that, that thought out, brought to the capital committee, you know. And I don't know if that cost is going to be a million dollars or $5 million. I don't, you know, until the engineering studies start, I don't know what that amount is going to be.
Mr. Townsend? I just have a, a question. So we have the, we have the chairman of the North Carver Water District here. Are we going to be hearing from Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Belvin, I would prefer that you, you've got a vote from your board. I know you've got a different number in mind, but I don't know where the money would come from to pay for that. So I, do you want to talk about what your $781,000 voted budget would do?
I'd like to say what the 781 won't do. It's not going to hire a company to come in and find out what's wrong with the plant. It'll cover an engineer probably to come in, but you're talking $65,000, just the price that I got from one company said they wouldn't go for our whole RFP that we did. They said, well, we'll do this portion of it for you for this amount of money, which we would have to go out and do another RFP just for that, to get other prices, because it's over the limit. So in order to do that, it's still, we're talking $65,000 just to get them in, start the plant up, and tell us what's wrong with it. Engineering-wise, you want to engineer, I think that's what DEP is looking for, us to really get an engineer in there, but we still have to hire somebody to come in and start the plant up to know if it runs. If we can hire an engineer to come in here and look at the plant, no problem, but you're still going to start it up. You're going to know what's wrong with it. But the problem is, is that in order to start it up, we're going to have to buy stuff to get it started up. And no one's going to go in there and work in there unless we get the lights working, because they're not going to have all the lights in there to work. And no one's going to go in there if we don't have air conditioning in there in the summertime to do this. So it, it's up to you guys. I say, you want to do this budget that the other two members approved, go right ahead. Whatever town meeting says, they say. If we go to town meeting, they say we want to reduce it to this amount of money, just understand that if this article gets passed that you guys want to do to dissolve, which was never taken up by the board itself, all right, if that gets approved, you've still got nine months to a year, at least nine months, before it comes into play. So we still have three members in there that are going to have to do something with that plan and comply with DEP and the requirements, what they gave us as a draft, is 30, 30, 60, 60, 90, 90, 120. These are timeframes of what we have to do things for, and that's what I'm going to tomorrow with DEP. So in my opinion, there's not enough money to do what DEP is going to require us to do. So how do I go to DEP and tell them, okay, thank you, guys, for having us, and yep, yeah, we haven't done. The town has not done, the North Carver Water District has not done what this supposed to do, all right? But we don't have enough money coming in from our residents. Right now, we're stuck with Middleborough, and the budget's the budget, okay? It's the money coming in, and we need money from the town to survive. And we still, the other part of this is, this budget, we still have about $65,000 that we have to buy water meters and have meters installed, and that's money that will come back once we bill somebody. But you have to understand, we need those meters so we bill correctly. And if we don't do that, then we're not billing correctly, we're not getting the money in that we really should be coming in, but we're going to have to increase water rates more, not just now, but in July, more. So we're going to ask for tax, those, those rating, those water reader people that pay those bills, that you're going to have to pay another $300 for the water meter to be installed, plus we're going to triple your water bill. So you either pay now or you pay later. I'm just trying to do what's best for the North Carver Water District, all right, by getting it up and running, okay? So whether it's the three-member board that's going to do this, or it's you guys and the town administrator and whoever else they hire to do it, okay, it's going to have to get done, or we just shut it down. So maybe the next vote should really be is, maybe we shut down the North Carver Water District, period, sell off the plant, and say, you know what, we're going to do away with that, pay everyone back their betterment fees, because we took betterment fees to better their property, and we're not. But that's part of the budget.
I understand.
So I, I say, if you guys could, increase it to the major amount, go to town meeting, say, this is what we want to do, is to lower it to this amount, okay? And then move forward for that. If town meeting says we want to lower it even more, let them do it, because we can always lower the money at town meeting. We can't raise it. And that's what I told the town administrator. That's what our bylaw says. So if you put the full amount in that I requested, all right, then we can turn around and go to town meeting and say, okay, we're going to reduce it at town meeting, and this is the reason to let the voters decide.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
I think if we were to increase it, we'd have to go by what was voted by your, or your, you know, the North Carver Water District made a vote on 781. So I think that because they voted on that, I think that's what we'd have to probably honor unless someone thinks differently.
Well, our original, the original budget was $996,000.
Thank you.
I was just, through you, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask Mr. Cannon if you could just explain a little bit about the connection between Article Four, this is paying the North Carver Water District's bills, and Article 11, which is dissolving the North Carver Water District. Because my understanding is that if these, if both these articles pass, the residents that are on town water will still receive water. Correct?
Through the chair. Yes, they would still receive water. The article to dissolve the North Carver Water District is essentially to dissolve...
I understand.
So, I say, if you guys could, increase it to the major amount, go to town meeting, say, this is what we want to do, is to lower it to this amount, okay? And then move forward for that, and if town meeting says we want to lower it even more, let them do it. Because we can always lower the money at town meeting, we can't raise it. And that's what I told the town administrator, that's what our bylaw says. So, if you put the full amount in that I requested, all right, then we can turn around and go to town meeting, say, okay, we're going to reduce it at town meeting, and this is the reason, and let the voters decide.
Yeah. Mr. Ryan?
I think if we were to increase it, we'd have to go by what was voted by your, or your, you know, the North Carver Water District made a vote on 781, so I think that, because they voted on that, I think that's what we would have to probably honor, unless someone thinks differently.
Well, our original, the original budget was $996,000.
Thank you, I was just, through you, Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask Mr. Cannon, if you could just explain a little bit about the connection between Article Four, this is paying the North Carver Water District's bills, and Article Eleven, which is dissolving the North Carver Water District. Because my understanding is that if both these articles pass, the residents that are on town water will still receive water, correct?
Through the chair. Yes, they would still receive water. The article to dissolve the North Carver Water District is essentially to dissolve the management of the North Carver Water District. The North Carver Water District would still exist, it would, in a sense, really, you know, and again, it'd take some time, you heard it, the senator talked about the timeframe, you know, it would become a town department, is what it comes down to. You know, and part of that, too, I can tell you enough, for years it has been, like a quasi-town department, and that means, you know, the town can bring resources to it, you know, we have manpower, we have equipment, we have people who can respond to emergencies. So, you know, there are things that we could do in the interim, again, if it did pass at town meeting, I would approach the commissioners to see if we could have an agreement, so we could step in immediately, try to help out, and to assist with this. Mr. Belvin's tried to run it as a district, as a standalone district, but I think that, you know, they need some help, and we should step in and help. I think that's better for the residents, honestly.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Couple of things. So, as everybody here knows, I've been asking to discuss this budget for weeks, so I'm glad we finally can discuss it, because I think we've, right now, and Mr. Cannon, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a balanced budget, right now. That balanced budget includes $650,000 budget for the North Carver Water District, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, if we were to go with Mr. Belvin's, or the North Carver Water District's recommended budget of 781,000, and I have no doubt that that, a lot of thought's gone into that, and it's, it may very well be appropriate, but that would leave us $131,000 short, that we would have to go back, go back to the budget, and start cutting other items, because we have to go to town meeting with a balanced budget.
Correct.
So, I think there's a lot of moving parts here, we have the article to dissolve the North Carver Water District, I think we need to find out how that goes, and what the town feels at town meeting. We may very well, we know from previous discussions earlier today, come back in the fall and have a fall town meeting. And depending on what happens, we may need to, at that meeting, vote additional funds to help out the North Carver Water District. But at this point, we have a balanced budget, and I think it's awfully late in the process to go back and reopen the entire budget, to try to move things around, so...
To your point, Mr. Townsend, you're correct, but we wouldn't be touching the budget, we'd be using the free cash, Article Two.
But we've already voted on free cash, correct?
There's been changes already to that, so we have to revoke Article Two. Sorry, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, I think the two points that I were going to make is that, what's really needed here, that's the hard part, is 650 the real number, or 781 the real number? I mean, what's going to impact us if we don't do it correctly? That's part of what I'm saying, and then, back to, I think, the reason the chair held off on Article Two, is because Article Two is all free cash transfers, we were, we're trying to put money into reserve funds to build those up, but we do have room there, potentially, to make some adjustments to accommodate probably from, I don't think the 650 to the 781 would be unmanageable, given, you know, Article Two's, you know, like I said, a lot of that money's reserve fund, and you could just probably, we could figure out tonight what to take out of that. But I think it comes back to what's, what makes sense, what's the, and to what Mr. Belvin was saying, is if we were to put 4, 781 tonight, you know, you can go to town meeting and have that reduced, I mean, the board could still recommend less, you just can't go up. So, you're kind of stuck with, whatever we decide tonight is what goes to town meeting, and there's only one direction you can go at town meeting.
Mr. Townsend, sorry.
Well, based on those conversations, sorry, based on those conversations, then I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we should go back, discuss Article Two, decide whether we can find an additional amount of money to give to the North Carver Water District budget, and then come back and vote the North Carver Water District budget. But I think we, then we need to have that Article Two conversation first.
Ms. Hewens?
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Cannon, you said that the North Carver Water District voted two-to-one for the 650,000, or for the 781?
For the 781.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Ryan?
So, if you want to go, do you want to go back to Article Two?
I'm fine either way, I just, I didn't want to go back and revoke these things, so let's, I'm fine going, and let me just try to understand this from a standpoint of, the 781 number, what does it get us that 650 doesn't?
Mr. Chairman, I could not answer that for you. I can tell you the one thing, when I hear Mr. Belvin speak about the things that are needed out there, I think to myself, town staff could be working a lot of these things, the heat, the lights, yeah, I, again, I'm just not sure what we could take on ourselves, and what, and again, they're bringing consultants to be able to do this. It's always cheaper to have town staff out there. So, again, Mr. Chairman, what the actual cost would be, you know, the difference, the cost difference, I, it's hard for me to tell you right now, because, again, we'd be doing a lot of the stuff with town staff.
Mr. Ryan?
So, I think what you're saying is that we could potentially absorb the 131,000 equivalent by just using town staff to do a lot of the things, is that, would that work out? Can we, can we actually go in there and do that kind of work with the North Carver Water District, or is, is there something keeping us from doing that?
As it stands right now, the town does go, you know, the town, the town cuts the grass, right, the town goes out there and helps out, the town plows snow, right, if they have to get in there. You know, so the town takes on tasks right now, you know, if you remember, Mr. Belvin came in before, when there was an issue with the natural gas tank that got filled up, you know, well, that consultant called the town staff first to go out there and meet him, you know, you know, those are the kinds of things, the routine things that happen every single day, that town can respond to. So, I, again, we might be able to absorb the entire 131,000.
All right, Mr. Belvin, do you have any comments on the 781?
Yes. I voted against the 781 because it wasn't enough money, that's why, okay? We still have, DEP's going to require us to hire an engineer, number one. Not, I take care of the gas now, it's in my name, they call me now, okay? The ambulance, I mean, the alarm system, they call me, they call the town, I just want to make sure that you understand that, I understand...
I'm not more trying to itemize the difference, I'm just...
What I'm saying now is that we, whatever money we get in, we have to make sure that it's being utilized to the best abilities that it is. We're going to need at least $65,000 out of that budget to get somebody in there and look at the plant. Then we're going to hire an engineer on top of that, all right? And what I don't want to do is hire the same engineer that built that plant, that there are some issues for that plan. So, I want someone independent that wasn't part of it. So, whatever money we get, I'll make sure that it is done right.
Okay.
So, I mean, just, unfortunately, there's a lot of thing in there, if they get in there and say, well, we need $25,000 for a computer system, that's what I put in for the budget. It's just, we're not going to know until they get in there, so...
I guess to the board, I, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I would say that if there's no appetite to increase this to what the commissioners voted, then we should tackle Article Four first, because there's no appetite to increase than Article Two stands. I myself feel that, this is the commissioners, and the 781 is what they requested, that's what I would look to provide, but that's just my thought.
To Mr. Chairman, I just don't know how we'll know whether we can provide more money or not, until we discuss Article Two, if that's where more money would come from.
Okay.
So, that's just why I, it may be that there's no money, extra money.
There's money, that I, so go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Townsend, if you want to do that, we're fine, but we can find money and pull it out. I just don't want to do that, if nobody wants to increase it, then why do it? So, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, I mean, I think to answer Mr. Townsend's question, we're, so we're putting hypothetically $600,000 into the capital debt and stabilization fund, you could drop that by $131,000, and that would give you the additional money, you're just putting less into the capital debt and stabilization fund, and that was in our reserve account.
Yep.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, my question to the town administrator, I think we put that amount in the, well, yeah, I would, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. I, again, we're mixing our articles here, and I'm not trying to cause problems for the board, or for anybody, I just think that if we're talking about how much money we can afford to give the North Carver Water District, that money would come from our, any extra money would come from Article Two. So, I just would think we'd need to have discussions about the items we're spending money on in Article Two, before we know if there is any extra money, that's my only point.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Cannon, what do you recommend that we do, having prepared this budget for us?
Again, a lot of time and effort has gone into the budget, I would recommend coming at the, coming in at the $650,000, leaving Article Two as it is, and then see, again, let's see where the town meeting goes with dissolving the North Carver Water District. If it goes the way I anticipated it to go, you know, we'll be doing a lot more with town forces than we will be with consultants. And we will be bringing consultants, because we don't have an engineer on staff who can, you know, come up and tell us what's wrong with the overall plant itself, so, and we will be doing that.
All right, Mr. Ryan?
Okay, so, if we do that, I still have some, there's still some items on Article Two that I wanted to talk about, so, Mr. Cannon raised one, that we do have to, we have to modify it, because where it says general fund subsidy, raise and appropriate, that's incorrect, that needs to be changed to free cash. But I do have a question, maybe through, maybe for town council, too, relative to this article and Article Two. So, this article is saying to move, the article is written, and this article is written to say, take $200,000 from free cash. That's in the, under the Article Four part, where it says that they're going through with all the places where the money's coming from, and it is identifying, it is identifying $200,000 from free cash here. So, in addition, Article Two is also covering the same $200,000. So, in Article Two, it's saying, you know, transfer from free cash all the following, of which the North Carver Water District, $200,000, is also listed there, too. So, I, that, I think would be confusing to the voters, and it seems like we're almost double appropriating $200,000, we're not really, I mean, the balance doesn't come out that way, but we do have it listed in two articles, which both say transfer from free cash, seems to me that that probably is not the correct way to do it.
I just look at one as a source, one as a use, so I'm not sure if that plays...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Mr. Chair? Well, the free cash is a source of cash, and the $200,000 in Article Four is a use of cash to fund the North Carver Water District.
Right. So, I would, I defer to Karen on this, but my understanding is that Article Two is for FY '25, and Article Four is for FY '26.
That's not, no, I don't think that's correct. No, we're transferring from free cash, Article Two is transferring all that from free cash.
For about 20 years now, that's just since North Carver was put into place, we've been funding it through free cash subsidies for debt.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may, Article Two does say, this article will allocate funding from FY '25 free cash.
Correct.
And the Article Four...
Also says transfer from free cash.
But it says from fiscal year 2026, so there's a different fiscal years?
I don't think that you can do that.
I don't think you can do it either.
Well, I, again, I have to defer to the accounting.
All right, Karen, you want to walk us through your thought process with the $200,000 from free cash to the North Carver Water District?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, so within the first article for free cash, whenever you have an enterprise fund, and you are providing a subsidy, that free cash article is allowing me to appropriate the funds within the general fund, which will then be transferred to the enterprise. Within the enterprise fund, you have to list all your revenue sources, so we're appropriating the 650, and then identifying the sources of revenue, where it's coming from, and that's something that has to be included within the enterprise article. We're not appropriating two different things, and the thing with free cash is that it's a year behind, because they take your FY '24 ending balances, which are in FY '25, that's why they say FY '25, that FY '25 free cash revenue is used to fund FY '26 budget. But you have to have it listed in both articles, because within the enterprise article, you have to show the revenue sources of where you're going to be paying for those expenses as part of the enterprise fund, in terms of how it has to be reported, but it's not double dipping or double counting.
Okay, all right. Did you want to go with the other items in this Article Two?
So, Chair, there's no, there's no action being taken on Article Four at this time, other than that correction of raise and appropriate?
Well, the board hasn't voted on Article Four yet, this is the first time it's been in front of the board, so...
I see.
We'd be looking for a recommendation to add it to the warrant, and then a recommendation from the board.
So, I'll make a motion to add Article Four with the correction that general fund subsidy say free cash is the source?
Yes.
And you're recommending the 650, or the 781?
I'm recommending to add the, to add the article as written, with the 650.
We have a motion to add the article, in a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor adding the article, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Who's zero? Anyone like to make a motion to vote on Article Four as written? Recommend the article.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Four.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one. I think that they, I looked at the 781, but that's just mine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going back to Article Two, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just walk through the changes before we take any action on this. One thing, I'll start off with, right off the bat, is an article name change, we went to the name of budget transfers, just to make it more understandable for the average voter. You'll see also a change in the article language, and that is primarily that all of the funding now comes from free cash. We did have here, previously, the $97,861, which is raise and appropriate from a pilot. So, we've moved that over to Article Six, which kind of probably brings, we said the next thing, that reduces our OPEB line by the $97,861, which the board voted it previously to put that in. Again, that money was moved over to Article Six, well, we can address that in a minute. That also reduces the total to $1,675,918 for Article Two, and then you can see that we also changed the informational summary update to reflect, again, all free cash, and no raise and appropriate.
So, we're looking for a motion to recommend as amended?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to recommend as amended. Any other questions, issues, concerns? All right, I've got some, how do, do we know this is right? Do we know that this is the final change to this, and Attorney Global, you vetted the legal aspects of this, everything is fine?
With respect to the Article Two?
Yeah, the Article Two.
Yes, Article Two, so what we did was, we took out the references to the raise and appropriate with respect to solar, and I think that was put in, was it 10 or 11?
It was, it was moved to six.
Oh, six, okay.
Six.
So, yeah, so otherwise, it goes right back to what it was originally, and what it always is, allocating free cash for certain fiscal year, current fiscal year, you know, in this, mostly for either expenses, or for stabilization funds.
Okay, and I guess to you, Mr. Cannon, or to the finance director, why did we choose to reduce OPEB versus these other items?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
So, the discussion was moving the $97,861, which was not a free cash item, to Article Six, which is other transfers also, to, all to the middle high school building stabilization fund. So, that $97,000 was originally voted by the board on the original vote into the OPEB fund, that's where we put it originally, so we just...
I know, I know that.
That's why we decided to move that, that's why we decided to reduce the OPEB.
I guess I'd rather, I'd rather see a different item reduced than OPEB. How do the other board members feel on it?
I don't like the idea of reducing OPEB either.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hewens?
I think that we need to build, we need to have some money in the building stabilization fund for a new middle high school. There will always be OPEB until we're all gone. There will always be other post-employment benefits, which is essentially healthcare for retirees. It's just always going to be there. We need a new middle high school.
I don't disagree, but we've got a funding mechanism each year for one-third of solar...
That money can be allocated as...
Every single year, it'll be going in there.
We're not, it's not that we're not putting some money in there, just not quite as much, there's still money going in there. Quite a bit, if I recall.
All right, what's the board's pleasure? All right, what's the board's pleasure?
I guess my question would be, what other account here would you, would you propose that we reduce capital debt stabilization?
I'd probably say capital debt stabilization, because we just found out it's already got $600,000 in it from a prior reserve. Let's make it 1.2 million.
That's an option. We haven't voted, I could, I could withdraw my motion and make another motion if, if the board wants to go that direction.
If I may, Mr. Chair, could we ask our town administrator what his opinion is on that?
Sure.
Again, Mr. Chairman, you know, looking just to make it as, as kind of as simple for the board as possible, to, you know, that money was added into the OPEB. I, I do, I agree, Ms. Ewens here, OPEB is always going to be a concern. I'm not sure, I know the exact amount of our liabilities, I believe it's in the tens of millions of dollars, you know, it's something we need to keep to work at. Both the capital stable and the debt stabilization fund, you know, we, we did talk about having, maybe at some point, we'd be able to buy the latter truck with cash as opposed to borrowing. I know it's a, it's a borrowing item, because we don't have the money on hand, but at the time, you know, again, we've talked about this four-year lag, we might be able to pay down that, that debt or, or, again, eliminate that, that borrowing.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Townsend?
Through you to the town administrator. I know when our auditors come in on an annual basis, OPEB is always an important item to them in maintaining our bond rating. By cutting the amount that we're putting into OPEB, do you anticipate that that could possibly have any issues with our bond rating?
I, I don't believe so, Mr. Townsend. That is still a substantial amount, it's almost $160,000. I don't have the number memorized from last year, but I don't believe it was over $100,000. So, you know, that, that's still a decent amount. They're always looking for something to go in there, you don't want to ignore it. So, there is still money being allocated there.
Thank you.
All right. So, I guess we've got a motion and a second. Now, any, any other issues and concerns? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor of voting Article Two as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one. One.
And vote to recommend?
I move that we recommend Article Two?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one. One.
Three to one.
Try it again, three to one. Three to one. I just looked over. You throw me in the spot. All right. Going back to the agenda, we've just taken care of free cash, we've taken care of the North Carver Water District, now the easy one.
Mr. Chair, I threw you to the town administrator. Were there other issues on this warrant that we should be talking to the board about?
On the overall warrant, yes.
Yeah.
I have a number of my Article Three, Five, Six, Thirteen, and Seventeen. So, I have multiple. Like, some of them I consider to be minor, but I want the board to be aware and make sure, you know.
I'm sorry, Three, Five, Six, what else?
Thirteen and Seventeen.
Thirteen and Seventeen.
Seventeen. Any particular order, Mr. Cannon?
I'd like to go right in order, if we could go to right to number three. I, I believe the board has seen this article before, but one thing that we did do in the, in the article description, we removed the words "and transfer from free cash," and I'll apologize to the board, that is held over from last year when we actually used free cash in the budget. There is no free cash going into the budget this year, which is a good thing. You don't want free cash in your budget. You can never count on free cash, and you don't want to be budgeting free cash. The only other thing I'd say really on this article is, under the informational summary, I did add the last sentence, and I did that based on a conversation and a meeting I had with the Finance Director and Mr. Ryan. We used a ratio of 75% for the school of the fixed liabilities and 25% for the town to come up with an overall cost split between the school and the town. You'll see it if you do that math. The approximate, again, approximate school budget, $35,946,130, and then the approximate town budget on that, again, breaking out that 25% of the fixed liabilities, $16,337, $16 million, sorry, $337,301.
First is $35 million.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right. So, that still adds up to the overall town budget of $52,283,431. But that breaks out the fixed liabilities with just a general ratio.
Mr. Ryan?
I think in previous meetings, we had discussed, you know, showing the town operating the fix, and then the school operating budget as three items to depict that. So, when we're showing a total town budget of $26,880, I think that could be a little misleading as to what really goes into that. It seems to me it would have made sense to have pulled out the fixed liabilities, the $14,57,000 that we had talked about before and just shown, you know, here's the, here's the budget being presented by the school department, here's the fixed liabilities of $14 million, and then here's the town operating, which was roughly whatever it was, $12 million or so. I had made a recommendation that at least we depict that, that's how we've done it in previous years. And I think the taxpayers are used to seeing, and the voters, you know, a fixed cost for, for, you know, that we used to call shared, but we're calling it fixed now. What's, what's the town operating and what's the school operating? So, my only recommendation would have been to depict that in that way again, same way we've done.
Yeah, I got, I'll, what I don't understand is, is, yes, we used to have three categories, the shared cost, which is now fixed liability. Again, I don't agree with having that big bucket of costs versus allocating it directly to the town and school, but the board decided another way. But now we decided not to do that either, and we're blending everything in to this town budget section. So, benefits, $11 million, I mean, has the Old Colony Tech, 1.4 million, and I'd rather see that down in total school costs, because that's the cost of educating all the kids. You don't have to lump it into the school general budget of 25 million. But you could certainly add a line underneath that said Old Colony to get a total, total cost of education. But then, again, you've got all the benefits up in another category, so I, I don't know. I just think that town meeting people, I know you're trying to disclose it down at the bottom, but at town meeting, people are going to say $26 million for the town and $25 million for the school. They've never seen that, they know that's not the right ratio.
Mr. Ryan?
Sorry, in my.
Sorry, Karen.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I provided a spreadsheet this afternoon to you and to, to the town administrator, showing a breakout of the $14 million. So, I took the $14 million, I broke out the cost for the school, for the health insurance, for the regional, showing that 14 broken out into the town and the school proportions for even going for your debt exclusion and your debt service payments, showing, and then I had another line showing the school's budget, plus what the breakdown of those fixed liabilities were between the town and the school. So, you could see that breakout, and that was going to be used as an attachment that was requested, as a, for part of the appendix. Is that still going to be presented? Because that gives a very good, clear allocation of how that's split out. And it was for each line of the fixed cost. You see the total, $14 million, you see the amount that's coming off for, for each line of those fixed items. Is that something that you wanted? Because we, I did prepare that to be used as, as a part of the appendix. And I listed it as CA.
Did you see that, Mr. Cannon? But Karen, to your point, yes, we needed this, but we needed this a while ago.
Yeah.
Not now. You know, getting it, getting it the night we're trying to vote is, is difficult. Sorry, a bunch of questions. Mr. Townsend first.
Thanks. Just quickly, not really a question, but I, I just think when you read through the budget, that as it's presented in Article Three, it's, it's misleading, and I, and I wish it had been done in a, in a different way. Clearly, the numbers, we know the school budget is a lot bigger percentage of the, of the total than it indicates here, and I think, I just think when people look at it, they are going to get a not totally accurate picture of, of the town budget as it, as it stands. And I, I really think we needed to show it in a, in a different, a different, more accurate way. I don't think it's, I don't think it's shown in an accurate way here. That's just my, just my thought.
Mr. Ryan?
And so, the way the article's worded, we're actually voting on Appendix B. And Appendix B is, and I, I don't know that we have it labeled in here, we don't actually have Appendix B labeled in the warrant. You probably want to, we want to make sure that's in there. So, the only thing that's being shown here is informational, because we're voting on Appendix B. So, I do agree with Mr. Townsend. I would like to make a motion that we actually make the informational part of this back to how it used to be with the town operating, the fixed liabilities, and the school operating budget. I'd like to see that changed as, as a motion, and then we are referencing, referencing the appendix to vote on, which is the details that we're voting on.
All right. Any questions from, any response from the Finance Director or Town Administrator?
If that's how the board votes, that's how it will be done.
So, I just made a motion, but I don't.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if that's how you want to see it, that's fine. You know, as you look at, you know, putting together different charts, where you look, because the fixed liabilities are included in the operating costs, we'll say for benefits, and you're putting together charts, splitting that up, I feel that you don't have an accurate reporting of what you're actually paying out of each category. So, whereas, and I understand where you're, where you're coming from, mostly for, you know, snow and ice as part of O and M, so when you're looking at the O and M budget, it doesn't give a reflection of the total cost of you're using those costs set up as fixed assets. So, as I'm looking at the budget, I'm looking at, you know, what categories are we paying these out of? We can provide sheets showing all the breakdowns, but it doesn't give a true accurate picture of what our total benefits are, or total cost for O and M and debt service when they're being broken up. But if that's how you want to have it, I mean, that's fine, we can put together however you want to see it, but I just think it's more efficient when you're looking at it by categories, especially as you're putting together different graphs and representation, you're doing different trends and, you know, reports moving forward.
Mr. Ryan?
But however you want to have it, it would be.
So, we are voting on the appendix, and everything is listed in the appendix, breaking everything out in the back here. So, we do have all the benefits, we have the debt service, so that's the vote. The vote's on the appendix. The part that we're showing here in the article is just informational. We're saying, as an informational, we have fixed costs of $14 million, we have a school budget of $25 million, and we have a town budget, operating budget. That's just informational for people, and that's how it's always been presented. That doesn't impact that we're voting on the appendix and how all the details are in the appendix and the accounts that they belong in, and the totals.
No, understood. Thank you.
I do think, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee, what she's trying to, what she's conveyed to me is, she would have trouble breaking out the snow and ice in the operating, maintenance and operating budget, just because we don't really have a good allocation. I know, I know we plow the school parking lots, but, you know, whatever it is, 90% of the town is the roads. And then on the debt service, I'd have to look into that a little bit more.
I, I just don't recall us breaking, it seems like we're making a lot hotter than these, Mr. Ryan?
I think to Mr. Cannon's point, that's what's in the $14 million, though, and we're just showing that's a fixed cost, and we had agreed. So, it's really, we're not trying to divide it out into the different categories, we're just saying things like the plowing and, and the insurances and all that are in that $14 million fixed cost. What ended up happening here is that got rolled into what's called the town budget, and that's what, as Mr. Townsend was saying, is misleading, because people might think that's the town operating budget, and it's not. You know, that includes the health insurance, the retirement, and all that. So, if you go back to just having three line items, you know, the three line items are the $14 million fixed costs, which include the insurances, the debt, and all that, you know, the school operating budget and the town operating budget, it's just three numbers, it's what we had last year in the, you know, and it, I think it was pretty straightforward, and it doesn't impact the accounts and the roll-up, because that's in your appendix.
Just one more thought. I know at the very end of that article, we have an item in red that talks about the, the ratio of liabilities to the school and the town at 75 and 25%. I don't know why we couldn't just sort of bring that forward and have that as an informational summary at some point on the front page, instead of, because I don't, I don't think most people will even go to the very end of the article on the next page. I just, I don't know why we couldn't just show that.
We could certainly make it the first line of the informational summary.
Yeah, I think that would go a long way to helping it, because that clearly shows that, a more accurate picture, I think, of, of how the town budget is, is divided. And, and that's what I think we're missing here. I think when, when folks look at the first item they see, it looks like the town budget is larger than the school budget, and that's, that's clearly not the case.
True.
And I just, maybe we could bring that forward, and maybe that might go a long way in helping to solve the problem.
I, I do believe, Mr. Chairman, you know, we could also bring up, and I know it's, it's crossed out here, you know, you have the townwide fixed liabilities, right? If you bring that up above the $52 million, right, subtract that out from the town budget, we'd have a town budget, we'd have the fixed li, I think that's what the board is asking for, correct? Yes. I, I don't see any reason why we can't do that. We wouldn't be able to. We still have to have that ratio for our general, but.
Through you, Mr. Chair, another thing you made one, if you want to break it, if you want to break it out so that you're comparing it from prior years, in terms of how you do the warrant, then you also need to, within your comments, take out EMS, because EMS, it's still public safety. But what you've done in the past, you did EMS as a different budget, but it's still part of public safety within the, with the town. Only difference is that the funding sources is coming from different funding source.
Mr. Ryan?
So, you know, as you're looking at the total overall cost of the town, you know, going back to how you've done in the past, you never included EMS as part of public safety, but it is. So, that's something, you know, you, you know, where, do you want to see that broken out as well?
Mr. Ryan?
I'd be okay with just leaving it in, I mean, to what we, what Mr. Cannon just said. So, if you take this, what's depicted as the town budget, $26,880, and you take off the $14 million fixed, that makes the town budget 12.8 million. That's, that's probably fine. I know it includes EMS, and you're correct. If you were taking off another million off of that, that would have been, and the reason we did that is because it really wasn't a, a charge to the town for the EMS, because they had their own fund, that they just transferred the money out of, and so that's why I think it used to be a separate article. But I think that, that probably is fine to leave the EMS in, and just note that it is a, you know, it's not, it's not coming out of tax dollars, it's, you know, it's money that's transferred from an existing account. But I'd be fine leaving the EMS as part of the 12.8 million.
So, Mr. Chairman?
All right, what do we have?
If I could, real, you know, real quick, and I just did it once, we'll check it again tomorrow. You know, it gives a general town budget of $12,823,13, townwide fixed liabilities, $14,57,150, and then the school budget remains unchanged, the $25,403,268. And then also, let's take the last sentence of the informational summary and make that the first sentence.
I just, why wouldn't we have, under the educational budget, why wouldn't we have, I know we've changed all things around prior years, why wouldn't we have Old Colony in that total? It's the cost of educating our kids. Mr. Ryan?
I think that's because it's always been part of the fix in the past. I mean, we haven't really broken it out, but it is something you can, you can note, and I think people understand the Old Colony appropriation is outside of town, and it is part of education, so I don't know that we'd have to specifically call it out.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, one of the changes is an easy fix for this. So, when we look at the budget as the town administrator was saying, you know, we have the different amounts set aside, but then we would have to change the categories. So, within general government, within benefits, those numbers would then just need to be reduced based off of the fixed liabilities that fall within that category. So, I mean, that, that's easily, that can easily be done. So, you're just seeing, it's just going to look like a different allocation on that page.
All right, Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Chairman, I hesitate to say this, but I'm wondering with the number of changes that we have made this evening, if rather than recommending this tonight, if we might want to set up a short morning meeting to see these numbers sort of changed and make sure it reads the way we want, and then vote on it. I'll leave that up to the board, but I just want to throw that out there.
Any comments from the board, Ms. Ewens?
I, I think we can trust our employees to, to do what we've asked them to do. I think it was pretty clear myself.
And Mr. Ryan?
I'll make a motion, I guess, on what we want here, and then if, and then if there is an issue with that, I guess we could always have a morning meeting, but if we think it looks correct. So I think the motion is what we just, what Mr. Cannon just calculated, I'd do the same calculation. So it's to list the town operating budget as 12 million, 823,013, and list the fixed liabilities as 14 million, 057,150, and leave the school as it is, 25 million, 403,268. That's still all totals to 52 million, 283,431. So if we have those three items shown with the total there, I'll make a motion, we do it that way, and then we can decide if we.
I'll second that motion.
That's fine.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
Just, just one, Mr. Cannon, you're also going to move that last sentence up to the beginning.
I recommend that too, yes. And that's the informational summary, so I feel like I have the authority to do that.
Thanks.
All right, my only comment is there's been too many changes for me to feel comfortable to approve this budget, but we'll go with what the board wants to, to do right now with these changes. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Feed one.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just remember, Mr. Ryan did say if when we saw it, we were uncomfortable, we could, we could have a quick morning meeting to, to change that a little bit, so.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'll be happy to amend it, and we can circulate it to the board and get feedback on that.
All right, so we got, what do we get next, five?
Correct.
And, sorry, Mr. Chairman, five is just in the article itself, it's just a language change. You see it goes from and bond authorization of 2 million, 400,000, and it reads now and 2 million, 400,000 of bond authorization or other sums. That's the only change.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? I'm sorry, this is to, we've already added this, this is to make the, recommend the changes, the edits. All right, a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Opposed, zero.
And a vote to recommend, Mr. Chairman.
I move that we recommend the article.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Opposed, zero.
Article six, Mr. Chairman. So Article six, a couple, a couple of changes here. Previously, Article six was a, an article just to transfer the 225,310 from a previous town meeting, Article three of the 2023 annual town meeting. We have added to that, again, the 97,861 that we talked about before. And see, now that's a, a transfer into this middle high school building stabilization fund. We felt it was appropriate to be in this article. Also, we are trying to correct, if you will, an error in the past. There was an article from a 2020 town meeting article that said one-third of the net metering solar revenue would be transferred into the, again, the, and I want to make sure I try to get it right, the middle high school building stabilization fund. So we also want to correct that, that transfer that just didn't happen over the years. Now, we've had quite a lengthy discussion with Town Council about this. We do have the authority to do that every year. We just can't make up for the past years when it didn't happen.
I'm sorry, my excuse, I think I'm seeing in here that you are making up for the past year, the 715.
That's what we're doing, yes. That's what we're doing right here. But like FY '26, we can actually make that transfer without an appropriation from town meeting because we have the previous town meeting out of from 2020, which allows us to move forward with it.
Mr. Ryan.
So I think for clarification, my question is, we're not appropriating any new monies. This is money that's already in one account that we're just moving from one account to another account. Is that correct?
If I could, defer to Karen on this, but it looks like we're transferring the 225,310, again, it's a transfer from an account, transfer of the 715,755 and 60 cents, and then it is raising appropriate the 97,861, because that is new money coming in this year from a pilot.
And through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, first, Mr. Corvall.
Let's let Karen go first.
Karen.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So for this article, as we went back to 2020, we looked to see what money, what revenue came in in the solar net metering fund between 2020 and 2024. And then we looked at the amount of money that was appropriated in previous articles, which was just the 25,310, so we would do, so we subtracted that. The 200310 that's in that article was from FY '24. It was, it's just, it's just a transfer because it's already been appropriated, it's sitting in, it's a continued appropriation, and we're just going to be moving it into the fund. And then the balance of the 715 is what, from prior years, need to be moved as revenue into that fund, so we're doing that transfer.
Mr. Ryan.
So my, I guess my question on this is, how much do we really want in that account? Because there was some discussion about, you know, the purpose would be for the study, not, not yet for the building because you got to work with MSPA, and so do, have we gotten any input from the school department on, on how much, what's the total we're aiming for, for that account? And are we now going over that total that we wanted to set aside? Even though we had talked about, you know, putting some of the solar net metering money in that, we also wanted to cap it. I thought there was something during the policies that we had talked about, saying that we only wanted to build to a certain amount because after that, we don't need that money to build into that account anymore because it would be beyond the purpose of the fund.
Well, I just, go ahead, Ms. Praval, go ahead. Sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I did speak to Mr. Griffin, and you're right, so we're looking at having that fund between 1.4 and 1.5 million dollars. So we took, we took one-third of the revenue that came in for those previous years that I mentioned, but yes, we do, we would have a cap. So as we get closer to the amount in that funding, you know, between 1 and 4, 0.5 million dollars is what they needed at the time, we will no longer be doing that transfer into the fund.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Tony Corvall.
Okay. So this was a fund that was set up by two-thirds town meeting vote in 2020, and what that vote did was it created this stabilization fund, and it dedicated 33.3% of all solar revenues to go into that fund automatically. That is going to continue until town meeting votes not to do it anymore by a two-thirds vote. So with all due respect to everyone's policy, if you're intending to cap this at some point, you're going to have to go back to town meeting to rescind that automatic dedication of revenue.
Yeah, I just don't want to add the worst scenario here, was based on the verbiage you just said, all solar revenue. So all solar revenue is all solar pilots and all net metering monies.
Right, it was very broad.
Solar pilots have been put into the operating budget, so we don't have the ability to go back and claw back these solar projects. My point one. Point two is, you are correct, this will grow, but this is for the building stabilization fund, right? I think Ms. Weston said one particular point in time that the new fields have a 10-year life on artificial turf, and that's going to be another close to a million dollars. So having this number grow, or having this steady funding, at least until a 1.5, and if there is a need for other capital work to be done at the school, it's just something that we continue to build on until we can. So, but I agree to your point that when we want to stop it, whatever the number is that the town decides, we have to go to town meeting for a vote. Mr. Ryan.
Okay, so another point of confusion on this is that did town meeting vote to put the money into the middle high school construction reserve budget? Or did they vote to put it into the middle high school building stabilization fund? Because the way this is worded is, I would have thought they set up the construction reserve, not the, not the building stabilization.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So when town meeting voted in 2020, it created the middle high school building stabilization fund, and all the solar revenues were supposed to, well, one-third of the solar revenues were supposed to automatically go into there? The problem is, is that that did not happen, right? So some of it went to this middle high school construction reserve budget line item, some of it went to the, the, this says reserve fund, but that should be, oh crap, I'm lighting on the name, the.
Pilot. Through you, Mr. Chair, there was only one appropriation that was made, and that was in FY '24 from the 225,310, and it's sitting in a budget line item called middle high school reserve because that's how it was stated, warrant.
Yeah, so there is a typo here, so the, wait a minute, yeah, the 715 is supposed to be coming from the solar net metering revolving fund.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so, so there was this combination of, the money just wasn't in the past going in the right place. And so, so the idea now is to, you know, honor the original intent of town meeting and basically put the money into this stabilization fund that they originally voted to put in, and then going forward now, this will just start to happen automatically. And like we just said, it will happen automatically every fiscal year until town meeting votes to not do it anymore.
Mr. Ryan.
Sorry, so I think you were saying that they may need the money for other purposes, like fields or something like that?
I'm just saying the idea that there's, there's an idea that we should cap this at a particular number just for the plan of a new school. And I'm saying that that, that's, that's one view, but there's other needs for the money in this fund coming up. I know there's going to be a huge capital item for turf. Now, you could look at the capital outlay and try to budget it there, but I'm just saying I don't see an immediate need to stop this in the next year or two.
Well, my question was relative, if it's listed as a middle high school building stabilization fund, could it be used for other purposes than a building? That, that's my question based on that.
But it says high school building stabilization. Why would it be used for anything else than building?
So through you, Mr. Chair, this purpose can also be changed at a subsequent town meeting, and so if you, you know, for whatever reason decide either you don't need it for a building project, or you want to have greater flexibility to use it for other school-related building projects, and we don't think that this is broad enough, we can bring it back to town meeting to change the purpose as well.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cannon.
I know I've seen a 10-year capital plan, and I can't recall what year the school wants to replace the turf, but I can tell you, they have taken everything else off their capital for that year to reserve as much funny money as possible to do the field. Now, I think to raise that kind of money, they may also have to the town to remove all their capital items. I'll tell you, that's a very difficult thing to do. There's always equipment that's needed. There's always, you know, it's just every single year. To have a year with only one item on it is a very, it would be a very difficult task for the town and the school.
Okay, one more question?
Well, actually, I have a, a few. I guess my first, to Ms. Praval, is what is the amount in this fund right now?
There isn't anything in the fund because the money was never transferred. Are you talking about in the high school, in the middle high school?
Construction reserve, yes.
There's nothing in that fund because nothing had been transferred.
There's nothing in that fund, okay.
And so, Mr. Townsend, through you, Mr. Moderator, so there was a, a line item in the 2023 town meeting warrant, Article three, that specifically set, called it middle high school construction reserve, one-third of solar pilot, and I think the intent there was to put it into that stabilization fund.
I recall that.
Yeah, but I guess for whatever reason, maybe that language was confusing, and that money never actually went in there. And so that's where this 225 referenced in the, in Article, what is it, six refers to.
Okay, and I guess just one more thing, am I correct? When I listened to you talk about this, that we may need a couple of future articles, one to cap this fund or a certain thing, or just, just stop the fund, and another to maybe establish some different type of school, maybe a school equipment reserve fund or whatever you want to call it, just some different type of fund that the school can use and more flexible items.
Yes, and so I can, I can send Glenn the original, oh, actually, you've sent it to me, right? There were three parts of it that we voted, and so, you know, you can vote to, town meeting can vote to change any of those three parts going forward. You don't necessarily have to, you know, dissolve the fund. If you did, then, you know, that money would go back into the, the general fund. But yes, you can either vote to stop the automatic dedication, you can vote to change the, the purpose or amend the purpose, and all of those things can be done at town meeting in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, so where do we stand? Do we have some kind of amendment to this verbiage?
Motion to recommend the article as amended.
There's a correction to that, though.
I thought there was a correction to the amendment.
You have to, you have to.
Change from solar net metering reserve fund to solar net metering revolving.
I thought we talked about that, that's what I meant by amended.
And actually, can we also just in the proposed motion change, transfer to just say approve, since now we're also doing raise and appropriates in there?
Oh, the name of the article?
In the motion.
In the motion.
So why don't we just get rid of the word?
Just cross out transfer and just say vote to approve Article six as set forth in the warrant.
I will amend my motion to refine that.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Opposed, zero.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank Ms. Praval for spending like two hours trying to explain this to me this afternoon, when I had absolutely no idea what she was talking about when I moved in, when I got into the room. So I really thank her for making me be able to understand this.
A vote to recommend, Mr. Chairman.
I move that we recommend.
I thought that was a vote to amend it and put it into the warrant.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend.
We have a motion to recommend and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Article 11, is that next?
It's 11, it's 13.
There are changes to Article 11, I don't know if we need to.
The changes in Article 11 were.
Oh, you can't? Why, why is there amendments to it, though?
The changes on Article 11 were made the previous.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, Mr. Townsend.
Okay.
Yes, let's remove that one.
Just as a, Mr. Chair, maybe as a point of.
Tony Corvall.
Clarification, maybe at the end of this, you can take like a vote to authorize the town administrator, work with town council, to make like non-substantive changes to, you know, format and spelling and wording and things like that to clean it up.
So moved.
Yeah, let's go with that right now. We have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
The town administrator appreciates that. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn Article 13 over to Town Council, who is more familiar with this topic than, than I.
Thank you. Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So this is something new for 2024. The legislature enacted this firearms reform legislation, and.
Tony Corvall, just a quick second. I think these last two articles, non-financial, I don't know, did you want to let Karen know that we need Karen for the articles? I know she's probably got a lot going on where she's at.
Yeah. Karen, did you hear that?
Oh, she can listen. Sorry. Tony Corvall, go ahead, sorry.
I'll send her it.
Yeah, so again, through you, Mr. Chair. So as part of this new firearms legislation, one of the things that the legislature did was prohibit the carrying of firearms, even by licensed holders or those authorized to carry firearms, prohibiting them in most, you know, government buildings. But the, the act included a local acceptance carve-out that says that if a municipality accepts that provision, it can exempt its administrative buildings from the definition of prohibited places. So the, the act itself is a simple local acceptance, like you've accepted other local acceptance statutes in the past. The issue is that the, the state act does not define what an administrative building is. And my understanding is that the chief, you know, goes through his community of chiefs, and someone circulated around this proposed bylaw to try to define what an administrative building might be, and it's my understanding that maybe this came from the town of Plymouth, but I don't know that for sure. But in any event, I have spoken with the chief and with the town administrator, and, you know, the act does not require the passage of a bylaw to define administrative buildings, and, you know, generally speaking. And, you know, generally speaking, with the exception of the schools and the library, these buildings are all in the, the care and custody of the, the select board. And so my opinion is that, you know, if the act requires that you accept the statute, you know, that's your prerogative to accept the statute. But I would recommend that rather than having a bylaw sort of lock in what an administrative building is, especially when this is a brand-new law, that the, the better approach would be for this board to work with the police chief to decide what are the appropriate administrative buildings that should or should not be included within that definition.
A motion to put this amended article on board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or issues concerned, seeing none, all those in favor adding this article to the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend the article as amended.
Just a quick question on that, then. So the, the police chief has approved all of this?
Yes, he has. We talked to him today.
All right, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. And we've got 17.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, I'm recommending right now that we remove Part B of Article We will have a further discussion in executive session.
Okay. So moved.
We have a motion to remove Part B. We have a motion over a second. Second. Any other questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, all those.
Oh, I did have a question. So the, the assessors are okay with us removing Part B?
Yeah, yes, they are. They've recommended.
Okay.
Yep, they recommended.
All right.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Four zero.
Does the board want to recommend, yeah, as amended, I guess, recommend?
No, we recommend it.
Second.
We have a motion to recommend what Article 17.
17.
As amended. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Four zero.
Mr. Chair, just one final note. We, we got sort of late-breaking notice of what all the zoning and water protection bylaws were going to look like, and there are some issues that our office has flagged. And so my suggestion would be at this late time that you leave them on and that, you know, we try to work with the planner to, to clean them up by motion. And, you know, or if we decide that we are not able to do that, to pass over them for this meeting until we can get the language proper. Some of it relating to the ADU bylaw, we think might go beyond what the legislature is allowing there.
All right.
Do I have a question?
Mr. Ryan.
Do we, in case we missed anything, do we need to take any kind of a motion just to accept the entire warrant? I know we've been voting on each of these articles separately, but do you need any kind of a, like, we vote to?
No, I did discuss that today with Town Council. He's comfortable as long as we've gone over every article. And, you know, you did just give us the.
All right. So you're sure we voted on every article to date?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Okay, next item, I guess I would defer Mr. Turn to Corbo. You're welcome to hang around, but I think you're, is there anything else? It's on there for you.
Do you, what, for the executive session? Do you want me for that?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. You've given us a lot of the information in prior executive sessions. Welcome to stay, I just didn't know if you had.
No offense, but if I can get home earlier, I certainly will.
Thank you for all your help.
Absolutely. Oh, you're welcome. And, you know, if, for whatever reason, you change your mind and you need to talk to me about what's up in the executive session, Glenn has, and John, and Mark, and everybody has my phone number.
Great. All right, good night, everyone. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
All right, set start time for annual Town Meeting and set date for additional day if needed.
Do we, what time do we usually start? Six or 6:30?
We've changed our, sorry, we've, we've changed our times of time. I think recently, we've been starting at 6:30.
I believe recently has been 6:30.
Yeah, did we discuss, I guess while Mr. Corbo is here, have we cleared an additional date for Town Meeting with, with Mr. Corbo? Is that something that's been discussed, if we need a second date?
It's Friday, I know. We've asked everybody involved about the ninth and the 10th. So moderators, schools available, Mr. Corbo's available, even though he's checking his calendar right now.
At this time of year, you can never be sure. Yeah, I am available on the ninth and the 10th.
So it would be up to the board to select, and I guess tradition has been to skip one night and come back the second night. So if it's the 10th, you know, that's, again.
But if everyone's available, I'll make a motion that we set the annual start time for Town Meeting at, at 6:30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
And I would make a motion that we set a second day if needed. Did you say April 10th, Mr.?
Yes.
April 10th with a start time of 6:30 as well.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero. Four zero. All right, Town Mr. Update.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Aye, thank you.
I'll go very quickly, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. The deck at the COA is currently under construction. We're anticipating a two to three-week till completion date. There has been some discussion about deck furniture there. I believe we have to make sure there are no cost overruns associated with the deck before we can comment on that, but we'll, we'll see what we can do. And then also on pickleball, they are hoping for a, for the paving to be done by April 15th. I believe April 15th is when the box turtle restrictions go back into play, so they'll, they'll have to deal with that if they're not done by April 15th. The only other thing I want to mention to you is, is I did have a chance to attend a legislative breakfast last Friday. You know, it's good, it's conducted by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. They kind of give us a heads up, particularly this time on the state budget. I think that's something I always like to keep my eye on. Right now, it's doing very well. It's, it's, it's in the black. I shouldn't say it's very doing well. It's in the black, which is, you know, something you want to keep your eye on. A couple of years ago, in La Cava, was affected, they were in 9C cuts. If the, if the state budget is in the red, what they do, they'll cut, they'll cut state aid if they have to. So, you know, as we sit here and budget, we come up with our state aid numbers, you know, if it were in the red, they, they could make cuts to, to your, to your assessment. And again, then towns have to turn around and, you know, usually cut back, sometimes cut back on staff, so. Right now, it's in the black. The last time the 9C cuts came through, they only did cut away the grants that most towns were receiving. They were able to balance it that way. The only other thing I do want to make the board aware of, and I did, I did talk to the representative and the senator about today, there is a bill out there to help towns with municipal, municipal and safety buildings. So, you know, fire, police probably would pertain to copper, we're fairly new, but, you know, we're going to build like a new EMS, a new COA, if we're going to do something for the recreation department. You know, they'd set it up so there'd be a percentage of reimbursement, kind of like they do on the school side. It hasn't gone through yet, you know, we'd probably take significant funding to do that. But it, there is those discussions. I always kind of like to keep my eye on that bill because, you know, if there's any money, way we could, you know, bring money into the town of copper that way, I think that'd be a good thing. So again, I'll continue to, to monitor that for the board. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick question on one of them you brought up about the plan for the EMS COA. We had that $50,000, I think it was, that we approved last year to do an analysis. Has that been done?
It, it hasn't been done. We're still moving forward with that. We're in discussions with the engineer, the engineering firm, the architectural firm to get that done. So we are going to move forward with that.
Just one, just one thing, just a comment on the, on the COA deck, and I know we've talked about this before, but we did make a commitment to the folks down there that the deck would be, would be furnished. So I understand that we need to, to make sure there's no cost overruns, but we're pretty close on this project now, and I think we need to have a plan on how we're going to furnish it. And I have not heard that, that plan yet, but we need to be ready to go with that. The last thing we want is a, is a deck finished down there on a beautiful May Day and have nobody be able to utilize it because there's no place to sit. So I just, we need to have that plan.
Yeah, well, if you give me, let me, let me, let me dig into that a little bit.
I appreciate that.
And find out what we can do there.
All right. No other items on the agenda for 48-hour notice. Approval of the minutes for March 4th. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for March?
So moved.
A motion to a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other issues, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for March 6th? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I have to abstain, Mr. Chair. I wasn't there.
301. All right, select board announcements, Ms. Hewens.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
You're right. I'm sorry.
I get, I get them wrong all the time, so feel free to correct me. All right, select board announcements, Ms. Hewens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Even though we just talked about it, I want to remind people that the annual Town Meeting is set for April 8th at the Carver Middle High School Auditorium, 6:30 PM. The alternate date is April 10th at 6:30 PM in the same location, and that's for if Town Meeting goes longer than expected, which it sometimes does. And finally, I just want people to remember Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry. That's for anyone who's in need, and in particular, our town's veterans. Actually, I think it's veterans from all towns, but particularly Carver.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan. Again, I'd like to thank Senator Dooner and Representative Gasky for taking their time out of their busy schedules to, to have a very informative session with us. Learned a lot by listening to them. And if I could ask the town administrator maybe to keep on status of the bills. I think it's very important to the town to see how, if they progress, and, and I think